I don't.
Yeah.
Thanks, the clock. I'll call the city council public hearing leaving to order. We'll prove the agenda.
I'm going to approve our public agenda. I was like.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All favor. I. opposed. There is none. Motion carries.
So we will open our dungeon.
We know what Duncan came to. You already. Once.
Hey. Yeah, I tested before the meeting, so I hope it's the worst for you.
I'm here to present the well protection plan part two for the public hearing. For this presentation, we got a little bit of a history of the part one on what's initially been done. And also on part two, which we're currently working on. And with this every ten years, M D H requires that the drinking waters supply water area. Is reevaluated to see if it's changed in the last ten years and if they need to update the Duism. To any other portions of the city. So what's that?
I thought there we go. Either. One spiral.
Yep, I tried one and then. And with the part one, that's being done by M D H. They usually do it for these smaller communities. And with that, they use a program called Mod Flow, and that's what. Shows how the water flows within your guys' drinking water supply area. Over a one year span and a ten year span. And with this, yeah, they're taking the travel time, the flow boundaries on whether what the recharge and discharge of the water is, and if there's any surface water contribution to it. If there's any hydro soils, which way the groundwater is flowing. And then just also how well the aquifer is communicating with other aquifers, other people are pulling out of. And with this, this is one of the maps from M D H's part one study that was done in twenty twenty three. They grabbed all the well information from their database there and use that to develop a ground water flow, which you can see. It kind of runs a little bit to the northwest underneath the city through the. Drinking water supply area, which is that yellow box in the center. And then it all looks like it's kind of flowing towards Black Duck Lake. And then with that information from those well logs, they create a cross section to determine what the local geology is looking like to better determine how. Well, water moves through the aquifer. And this area you can see in the north, it's more of a silty loam, and then to the south, it's more of a loam type consistent of soil. And this is the cross section they made. The darker red areas is predominantly clay rich material, and then you get those. Random little sand lenses that kind of. Fade in and fade out, and in the very center is where the public water wells are at. You can see that's there's a nice long sand vein about hundred forty, hundred and sixty feet down. And this one, they're able to amend the. Dewism a bit. You can see in the dash lines, that's where the old drinking water supply area was. And then in the solid line, they kind of expanded it further to the northwest, and they took away some of the area on the eastern side of it. And then with this, we have our final vulnerability assessment where. They determined based on the geology and the groundwater chemistry. There's low vulnerability for this off brick, so you have about a hundred and forty feet of clay separating your. This, so it's going to take a while for anything to dip through there. With the groundwater chemistry, they use tritium, which is a radioactive chemical that's found in your surface waters ever since the atomic bombs went off. So that's the way of saying that this isn't young surface water that's getting into Oxford. It's older water than that. Exactly. That good stuff. So with this new Duism, you have the blue areas, drinking water or the water supply area. That's your ten year travel area, and that red circle in the middle. Is how long it takes a contaminant to get to the wells within a year. And then they use the political boundaries to deal with the Dewisma, which is kind of just an area where they can manage it a lot better, and that's just using parcel lines. So once that was all determined by M D H, we started the part two plan. We had our second scoping meeting with M D H. We developed a well head protection team. We updated the potential contaminated source inventory. That was goals, plan of actions, evaluation programs, and then conducting this public hearing, which we're doing right now. And then with your well protection team, that's going to consist of. Us and then also locals in the area and other governmental entities. That way we have the best idea of what we should be doing to help protect the water in the area. And with that, one of the potential contaminated source areas that was. IDed in the part one was just any well that's over a hundred and forty feet. Otherwise, there's nothing else that M D H really mentioned as a potential contamination source for the area. So in this figure, we identified eight potential wells within the Dewisma. Two of them are the city wells, and then there's also the one test well that's also on city property. But then that's just the surrounding water wells for the locals that are outside of city limits on. And then now that we have that potential contaminated source inventory, we've developed goals to help protect the water that we'll be doing over the course of the next ten years. And they'll be funding opportunities for those in the future through that through M D H. And once we get through this public hearing, depending on the comments, we can include those in our part two plan. And then that's where we have to get a. A motion from you in the next city council meeting to approve a draft copy to be sent to M D H. For them to finalize it, and then once they finalize it, then it can go into a formal adoption and implementation after that. So are there any questions?
And from the city perspective, you know, Mike's been involved in all. We. Yep, and then we've had some township representatives, the D N R.
Yes. Um, that M D H and.
Red Lake watershed involved in that too.
Uh, we did, they were. County, so we had the county and then the watershed plan. Yep. So they were also incorporated with this. They're, they didn't come to any meetings, but they were, you know, came through by email quite often.
Yeah, so then we'll leave it up to Christina as to how you handle this at the next one, whether it's just a motion or if it's a resolution. We basically need this in June because our deadline was July. Point five to get this off the department also right on track, which is good.
The well got through a good shape.
We're only approving the draft plan.
Yeah, for the apartment built three least there.
Yeah. And as long as that's captured in the minutes of resolution.
Yeah, maybe have some way we can cheer.
Then we have to have the, then we do it again after M D H views and approves.
And that's one where just go straight to your guys' packet then. It doesn't have to go to another public hearing or, you know, it's already been through the gambit. So then it'll just be you guys formally adopting it as your well protection plan, and then M D H will contact you within. Sixty, I believe sixty days of contact you to start implementation processes and start getting that going forward. And then let you know what any funding opportunities are available through them for it.
Just making sure I hear right. Did you say there was two wells in the city that were possible contamination?
Uh, it was a two city wells. I might have misworded that. They were just on there as possible contamination sources, but they are up to M D H codes.
Okay.
And it's one of those where there's always that possibility that any well that penetrates through the clay layer and goes down to the aquifer. There's always that chance. And that's why we identified them as potential contamination sources. So in that way. We know what where they are and ways to prevent them from. You know, if it's an unused well, that's not used in more of a year, that's something we can look at M D H to help. That landowner possibly just to seal up that well then. But as of right now, as everything's up to M D H code, so. They're not a risk, but. There's, there's always a possibility.
So there's three that the city owned that are in city limits. The rest were outside city.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
But they're connected to that same law.
Okay.
Just to clarify, none of them are contaminated.
Yes.
Yeah. More what you were asking.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, no, none of them were contaminated.
Right.
Yeah.
They're just identified as a potential.
Right. Yeah.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
What I'm almost likely to just for the council and with us is I will most likely draft a resolution for you guys to approve on June fifth. Do in part for that that this public hearing is tied together with two other requests or ordinance amendments. That way you're just not. Approving the minutes. Leaving it at that. We, I don't want. M D H to get confused.
Yeah.
By wondering why we didn't have a sole public hearing for it. It's just easier for me this way. Having to work over. And I can draft a resolution really simply.
I tell you that would be crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have something to do on some of that and some other ones, so.
That'd be great. I'll probably communicate with you on the way.
Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there any other questions? Also. Then we will move on. In the first reading.
Hey, this is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty five oh one. An ordinance amending section nine twenty oh four farm animals of the city code permit chickens in the city of Black Duck. The city of council of Black Duck ordains that section one nine twenty oh one is amended by adding the following definitions. A chicken coop is a temporary structure for housing chickens made of wood or other similar materials that provides shelter from the elements. And which meets the other requirements set forth in section nine twenty oh four. Chicken run is a fully enclosed and covered area attached to a coop where chickens can roam unsupervised. Section two, section nine twenty oh four is amended as follows with deleted language struck out and new language underlined. Prohibition farm animals with the exception of chickens shall only be kept in an agricultural district of the city. Or on residential lot of at least ten acres inside. Provided that no animal shelter shall be within three hundred feet of an adjoining piece of property. An exception shall be made to this section for these animals brought into the city as part of an operating zoo veterinarian clinic. Scientific research or license shows that it. Hold on. My mind will clear. Sorry, that's. I don't have the right version. No, pardon me. Make sure because it said lines through, but I eliminated my lines. So I was really concerned that I missed. The actual version.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, because I have with the exception of chickens in here, but that kind of caught me off guard. So I am good. I'm good. I'm sorry. What I just read is accurate. So I'm going to continue through subdivision two.
Perfect.
Okay, certain chickens allowed by permit. And yeah, up to five female chickens are permitted to be kept on parcels that are within city limits, provided that the owner obtains a backyard chicken permit from the city. Chickens must not be raised or kept for the purpose of fighting. No permit will be granted by the city to keep any chickens within a dwelling or garage, nor on a property that contains two or more dwelling units. No outdoor butchering of chickens is allowed. No roosters or crowing hens are allowed. Subdivision three, permit required and fee authorized. Any person desiring to obtain a backyard chicken permit under the subdivision must make a written application to the city administrator on a form provided by the city. And pay an application fee. Fees to be charged for the issuance of a permit to keep chickens shall be set by the city council on the fee schedule. The application must include a scale diagram that shows the location of the chicken coop and run. The diagram must show the distance of the coop and run from the adjoining structures and property lines, as well as the actual dimensions of the coop and run. The application must include the signatures of all abutting property owners demonstrating no objection to the proposed chickens. The city shall deny any application that does not meet the requirements of the section. A maximum of five permits at any one time shall be issued in the city. Chickens can only be kept on single family residential properties. The minimum lot size for keeping chickens is seventy five hundred square feet or a fifty by one fifty foot lot. All initial permits will expire on December thirty first of the following year after their end issuance, unless sooner revoked. Renewal permits shall expire on December thirty first of each subsequent year, unless revoked sooner. A permit is subject to all terms and conditions of this section and any additional conditions deemed necessary by the city to protect. The public health, safety, and welfare. Subdivision four, standard for keeping of backyards chickens. All chickens must be kept in an enclosed chicken coop with appropriate sized chicken run. The enclosed coop and run must be maintained in good condition and be sufficient in strength and size. To allow the chickens to move about, but also able to prevent escape. Coop shall be constructed in a skillful, skillful manner, including being ventilated, insulated, roofed, and constructed of moisture resistance materials. The enclosed coop must have a minimum square footage of four feet per chicken, but must not exceed a total of twenty square feet per chicken. The coop height must be between four and six feet to allow chickens to roost above ground. Protective overhead netting or roofing with an approved material is required on runs to prevent predators. Hoops and runs are allowed only in a rear yard. Hoops and runs must be located at least six feet away from the primary structure of the property. Hoops and runs must maintain a minimum setback of ten feet from all property lines and must maintain a minimum setback of twenty feet from all residential structures. Or adjacent properties. The chicken's living area must be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition, devoid of all rodents and vermin and free from objectionable odors. Brains and feed must be stored in a rodent or raccoon proof container inside of a structure. Manure shall not be permitted to accumulate on the property. Manure shall be removed at least once per week. At all times, a permit holder shall securely confine all hens within an enclosure. The owner or leasing shall not permit any hens to stray or feed upon a public highway, street, alley, or public ground, nor upon the property of another. Sale of eggs is prohibited. No person shall allow any chicken under his or her ownership or control to violate the city's nuisance ordinance. Persons that intend to no longer keep chickens on their premises shall notify the city administrator. If there is a coop, it must be removed upon expiration of the permit. Dead chickens must be disposed of according to Minnesota Board of Animal Health rules. Which require chicken carcasses to be disposed of as soon as possible after death, usually within forty eight to seventy two hours. Acceptable methods of chicken carcass disposal include these offsite options, incineration, rendering, or composting. The city reserves the right to require property owners to eliminate out all fowl and poultry within city limits of pandemic regarding fowl and poultry is declared. Subdivision size inspections. The city may inspect the premise for which a permit has been granted in order to ensure compliance with this section. If the city is not able to obtain the permit holder's consent to enter the property and may seek an administrative search warrant. Subdivision six violations and penalties. Any person violating any section of this section must be subject to a penalty in section one hundred ninety nine. Any person violating any conditions of this permit shall reimburse the city for all costs borne by the city to enforce the conditions of the permit. Including but not limited to the pickup and impounding of chickens. In addition to the other penalties described in this subdivision, the city may suspend or revoke a permit for failure to comply with the provisions of this section. Or any of the permits conditions. Prior to suspending or revoking a permit, the city shall provide the owner with notice of the suspension or revocation. And an opportunity to appeal to the city council. Subdivision seven enforcement duties. The police department shall enforce the provisions of this section. The police department may inspect private premises and shall make all reasonable efforts to prevent violations of this section, including but not limited to obtaining administrative search warrants. To gain access to private property when consent to access is not granted. Section three effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law. Second reading will be done on June fifth.
Ask if there's any questions from the. Any questions from the. I see no questions, Christina.
Forward with the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty five oh two. An ordinance amending chapter eleven licensing revising section eleven fifty rental licensing to provide updates to the manner of registration and renewal of licensing. The city council of the city of Black Duck. Finds that it is in the public interest to revise section eleven fifty rental licensing to assistance ordinance, registration and permitting. The city council of Black Duck, Minnesota ordained section one, the city code of as section eleven fifty oh one in chapter eleven licensing. Rental licensing is modified as follows with new language, language underlined and deleted, language struck out. Purpose and findings subdivision one purpose. The city council of the city of Black Duck finds there is a need for organized municipal inspection of residential residents. Residential rental units within the city of Black Duck. In order to establish minimum standards for residential rental units to meet city and state public health, safety, fire, zoning, and welfare codes. And to provide more efficient system for compelling both absentee and local landlords. To correct violations and properly maintain property within the city. Subdivision two findings. The city council of the city of Black Duck finds that an organizational municipal licensing program is necessary. And appropriate to effectively enforce residential rental unit maintenance standards. And to effectively correct and prevent law violations, nuisances, and other disturbances. And disorders involving residential rental units within the city. Establishment, the city council of the city of Black Duck finds that the most effective system of implant implementing the foregoing findings is the creation of a program requiring licensing of all residential rental units within the city of Black Duck. And the establishment of an orderly inspection schedule for the enforcement. Of uniform standards applicable to all residential rental units in the city. The city council of the city of Black Duck finds that to routinely inspect our residential rental units within the city of Black Duck. It must be completed on a biannual basis in March and April. For the enforcement of uniform standards. City code as section eleven fifty oh five and chapter eleven licensing rental licensing is also modified as follows. Manner of registration and renewal. The owner or designated agent shall make initial registration before offering the dwelling for lease. The owner or his designated agent shall make initial registration for residential rental. Property existing on the effective date of this section by personally filing. A registration statement at city hall no later than May thirty first of each calendar year. Registered rental property exists on the effective date. Shall receive an interim license until such time as an inspection can first be made. Initial registration for property which is not residential rental property on the effective date of the section or for licensed residential rental property. When there is a change in type of occupancy, shall be made by personally filing a registration statement at city hall. Before the property is used as a residential rental property or before use as a new type of occupancy. Each license issued pursuant to the section shall expire on the thirty first day of May of the biannual year for which it is issued. The city shall be required to mail biannual rent renewal statements to the property owner. Or the designated agent on or before March first of each biannual year. Failure to receive a renewal statement from the city, from the city shall not excuse the owner from meeting the license requirement. Renewal statements must be returned to city hall by May thirty first of the biannual year. Failure to return renewal form will recite an administrative penalty of twenty dollars. Statements may be returned by mail at the owner, property owner's risk to city of Black Duck via box three eighty, blah, blah, blah. If there is a change in the type of occupancy from the type stated in the registration statement, a new registration statement and license will be required. To be filed at city hall within thirty days of that date of change. Any renter may request an inspection of the rental property. Stating the reasons why the inspection is desirable and necessary. If, in the opinion of the city, an inspection is desirable and necessary. And the inspection occurs, the cost of the inspection may be charged to the owner if a violation is found. Effective date. This ordinance shall be in effect from and after its passage in public publication. Second reading shall be June. Fifth. Final reading.
Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Please, no questions, Christina. Also.
There are no questions, and I think we close the. Public hearing meeting and open the city council work session meeting.
Second half. Motion and a second. All in favor? I. Close. There is none. Motion carries. On to the. Regular work session. You know, we have the law.
Yeah.
Hold this first with the pledge. Sends us to the work session. Motion in the second. All in favor? I, closed. There are none, motion carries. Full business. How's our P D R? Gentlemen.
So making progress. The top end period for the environmental report under uh new board twenty-four. Uh we don't receive any comment from the core, I believe. Uh the state historic preservation office, they were given the information on March twenty-first. It's working, they've been taking sixty days, so we should let them have comments this week. I'm not holding my breath. Have control over that side. So we'll keep you posted on that, but the environmental reports have been drafted, got a copy of that. Kato and I, uh today the topic overall, two things regarding the environment for the minimum reporting report, so we are being close to doing this thing.
That's good. Move on to uh unless there's any other questions for Did you get it?
Okay. Um, so what I want to talk about with the library tonight is um this Board of Ed- Minnesota Board of Education grant application that was awarded to us. Um prior to me leaving on the vacation, the uh the people that are taking care of the grant sent me documentation that needed to be filed with the with the state in order for the grant to be um approved. Uh in addition to that, a revised budget was also requested of which I sent out. The grant minimum request was two hundred thousand. Uh when I first drafted the application, didn't ask for more than I thought we needed, and they still wanted to give us two hundred thousand. So I asked for like fifty-seven, I think it was Kelly, and they still wanted to give us two hundred. So where that leaves us is Board of Education is giving us two hundred thousand as a grant. So what that means to the city is this, we have a phased project for the library that will be able to proceed. Our first phase obviously is what we've already approved with Mr. Gustafson to do the first section of the library with our kitchen capital appropriated funds. Um, and be able to complete that, but what that also means is that in addition to our top percent sales tax funding coming in, we also have a reimbursable two hundred thousand dollar grant from the Board of Education that will help us continue working on the library.
That's huge.
It is huge. Um, couple stipulations, as there always is with the state.
Yeah.
This is a grant, just like what we did with Brownfield, it is a reimbursable grant. We can't use our sales tax money as a reimbursement. We have to pay for everything upfront and then send in invoices that are paid to the state to get the money back to us. So what I'll be talking to you guys in the future and hopefully on June fifth, they'll have it drafted, is a resolution authorizing the use of our modified revolving loan fund money to be able to pursue this because we need our money to put up front in order to get this back.
Yep.
I'm still waiting, I sent out feelers to Tony to give me estimates for all new flooring, all new electrical lighting, all new painting, and maybe some more modification for some F F M E inside the library so that we can fulfill this grant and use this money. Um, the reason that the stipulations are on it is because it's co- it's COVID money still. So the state needs to show that it's used the right way. Um, but the funding forms that I provided in the packet tonight are the preliminary grant approval forms. They have to basically show that, yes, we own the building, um free and clear. Um, there's no risk for them to give us the money because we're not in debt or we're not a nonprofit that's going bankruptcy, those types of things. Um, and then I also have to show other sources of funding. So I provided, you know, their two hundred thousand, our local sales tax option money that was approved by the voters and Carol less's money. So essentially, we have almost enough to do the entire square footage of the interior of the building. Maybe not necessarily the addition that we were talking about when Woodset first did feasibility study for us, but we should be able to do everything in its entirety. And because it's a reimbursable grant, if we don't use all of the two hundred, there's really no penalty to us. But that gives us, it gives us a bigger it gives us a a better down the road option of, no, we're not just gonna stop and try to refund and try to find another way to keep going. We have this door to do that. Don, did you talk about that at the meeting last Thursday with the with Kitchy?
No, it didn't even come up.
Okay.
They were more worried about all their CDs and moving money from this bank to that bank.
Okay. Kelly, did you have any, any opportunity to talk to the local library board about this yet? You gotta wait till I talk about it. You can now. Yeah.
It's been burning a hole in my farm.
I know, I know. I mean, I I've always been on the platform of never asking for more than what you need. Um, because I know that there's always balls up in the air for things of this nature that, you know, you'd never really know if you're gonna be able to use them all. Um, but when the grant administrator came back to me and said, we want to give you two hundred thousand. Modify your budget. I did. It was, like I said in, like I said earlier this year, it was a Hail Mary applying for it in the first place. The fact that they want to give it to us is is phenomenal, and it's my understanding they didn't give it to many of the library entities in Kitchy. And a lot of them applied, so.
I remember eight. That grants.
That grants. So we'll do our due diligence, just as we were going to anyway with the um public's funds with the first phase and we'll keep on moving, probably. Yeah, so um these are the funding forms. I'll have them in the consent agenda for you guys to formally approve, because I had to sign a bunch of them and send them off to the grant. And I'm waiting back to actually to hear from her to see if I missed anything. But I wanted to fill you guys in with where I was at with that. Otherwise, I don't have any more updates on Tony's timeline yet. A little difficult to nail down. I think he does a lot of stuff for a lot of people. His wife probably keeps him organized. Maybe, yeah, like any small business guy in town. Everybody tries to keep themselves organized. Um, otherwise, anybody have any questions for me on this?
Can you remind me, did we ever get any pricing on an addition option?
So the original feasibility study that Woodset did on, I can't remember what page it is, that's what I've been basing this application off of. Has um a remodel price based on square footage and an expansion with and without F F M E. Um, I used that metric to make the proposals for the grant at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, including the addition, I think the top dollar amount total from that document was like four hundred and twenty grand. And at that point, we knew we only had fifty-seven, we were like, how the heck are we gonna get there, right? Because at that point, we hadn't even had the voters approve the sales tax yet, so it was still kind of like this carrot dangling in front of us, we didn't know who we were gonna grab.
So even with the two hundred thousand and the sales tax, we don't have quite enough to pursue an addition.
I don't know, I feel really confident that with some of, with the changes that are gonna be done to that far west divide with the restrooms, that we probably are not gonna need it. At best, what we might be able to do is an outdoor space. Adding on to the east side of that building, a lot of stuff would have to change. Mechanical room, all of that.
Yep.
And that's where that number gets higher.
As well as surface ground reconfiguration.
Yeah.
Excavation retaining.
Right.
I just wanna make sure we don't, we explore using all that money and sell tax if we can, since we're gonna have it.
I think that the sales tax that you can't, definitely used. Um, I think the, the grant money will probably be, if anything, we may not use all of that. That's my line of thinking.
Well, that's a good point, though, I think it's, it's there. If we have the potential to do the whole thing, all at once. But.
Right.
If we're gonna come up. Or twenty thousand short or?
Well, the way I understand is, this is, you know, this is not time sensitive either, so at some point, I believe, and I, I go back to the grant. I mean, they want us to use the money by a certain date, I just don't have that date in my head. Um, I, I truly believe that even the half percent of those tests, we're gonna, we're gonna probably see that revenue a lot quicker than we thought. I mean, on average, back in two thousand eighteen, when I last got stuff from D O R, they were expecting us to have like thirty grand a year. That was over six years ago, and that didn't, at that time, include package shipping or anything of that nature, so that number could have tripled by now, because that was pre-COVID. I should see the first metrics from the Department of Revenue, now that we've had our first month collected in April. I don't think I'm gonna see that until June, but I should have some estimates of where, what that's coming in at very soon to share with you guys. Yeah. And granted, that'll, that'll all be it'll all vary from month to month in terms of, you know, traffic and purchases and all kinds of stuff too.
All right. Anything else, Kelly?
I've got the um gazebo book for summer reading programs, just in case Kelly shows up and is like, all right, welcome to the party, I guess.
Um, hopefully it won't be too disruptive. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's great.
Yeah, the liquor store could stay open most of the time during their renovation, and the library can too.
We'll be fine.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Okay, so I have something. Well, I was over talking to Kelly um there, they, and she uh the last question about handrails going on the outside of the building. They need to be, yeah, because people so when you walk up the stairs, you can't grab on the handrail because there's a board on the outside underneath. So people can't grab onto it, the elderly or whatever, so that needs to be fixed, you, you have to have on to it, you know. So need to go over there and like maybe put a board in the middle of that and then move the two by four that's on the outside on the inside. It's kind of because they're so tall, and this doesn't work to grab onto, you gotta go where you actually see it. But she wanted me to kind of bring that up. So.
So it's open for you, Mike?
I suppose so.
Well, that's on me, because I talked to Chris about it. I didn't talk to Mike about it.
Well, Brian Pierce was contracted to do this, and he does this stuff all the time, he did the gazebo and the restroom and the beach, so. Yeah, I mean, it's surprising me that that rail isn't, is too tall and, and is a problem and is not being, is not usable.
I'll take a look at it, fix it.
It's only the ones walking up, like the ones um you know, going along the building, I find it's the ones walking up the stairs and walking up the rail. I don't know why they did them that way, opposite. Yeah. And I just get complaints about it.
Okay.
I don't use them, so I guess I don't realize.
Okay. Anything else? How's the duck?
I'm still waiting for Matt and Tenster to call me back since the last time we met. So I don't have any movement on that portion yet, um but I'm curious to know if uh Don and Mike have had a chance to look at the base.
No, I'm, I'm awake, I, I didn't know that.
That's okay.
What you doing?
Lots of fun stuff with irrigators and lift stations and water plants, they're all failing miserably right now.
Oh. Wow, that sounds like fun. No, so you guys haven't had a chance yet?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Then we won't we won't beat that one to death, that was, we're just gonna wave.
Perfect.
Uh, city hall?
I have no updates on that.
Quick question for you. So it's, we're, we're going to be using some of the revolving loan fund as a possible funding source for part of city hall?
Yeah.
How would that affect?
Well, on a time standpoint right now, USDA role development is still on a holding pattern for us to even see if we get approved for that funding through Bill Trammy Electric Cooperative. So, I mean, throwing those balls, both those balls up in the air at the same time, I don't know what that's gonna look like because I really don't know what city halls funding is gonna look like either. Um, that's
And some certain cuts coming?
Well, I mean, they, there's just a lot of federal stuff that's going on, so USDA is kind of like been ghosting us in a, in a way. But what we discussed when it came to using revolving loan funds for city hall is to return the debt back to Bill Trammy Electric Cooperative. So that process shouldn't be interrupted by the library because we get the money up, we get the money up front first to do our project, and then we pay it, the debt back with the revolving loan fund. What we're talking about with the library is using it up front to complete the project, and then that gets reciprocated or reimbursed to us back from Department of Education, so that's an in and an out, the other one would strictly be an out after the project is done. Do you follow me? It's just, we don't know when the timelines are gonna happen for either one of them at.
We spoke it into existence, so.
Yeah.
No, I hope it doesn't, I just
Yeah, I Yeah, I don't know about that.
Okay. Yes, we moved to item B.
Yeah, so the reason I brought this up is I, and I've been communicating with Tyler on this. When I started digging into this right way vacation a little bit more and getting the county involved, it, I found out that what I assumed was Euclid is actually the original how do I say this, the original platted Euclid Avenue was already included in what parcel Tyler already owns. Okay, sometime in the timeline when the ball singer edition was being changed and Tyler, Tyler's property was created and that building was created, this is the original Euclid.
So it's already sitting in the memory.
It's already part of his parcel, it's actually in his parcel description, right? So then I went, went back to the county, and I'm like, so what the heck is this?
Yep.
Right? So after. Looking at a couple of plat maps. And doing a little digging with Charlene at the county, I found out that. This was vacated and put into this parcel, and what this be ends up being. Is part of Outlet B. So this is an original plot of Black Duck, this is Outlet B. So this section of property that's marked as a right of way in G I S is actually part of Outlet B, that was deeded to the city.
Nineteen ninety-one.
Thank you. So, um. Right now, what I'm trying to figure out is. How to continue proceeding for Tyler, because. What we would be doing is, we actually be selling a piece of property we own. It's not a platted right of way. That's part of Outlet B. Right? The question that I'm still working on is how to handle. What would end up being? The alley.
And does?
And does the other property owner have a stake in it, and? The answer that I'm getting back from like the attorney is yes. But I'm still trying to figure out how to handle this and. Bring it to a public hearing point, so that the vacation can happen on the alley. And then what do we do with the parcel that is Outlet B?
Some simple vacate turned into.
A mess. But I'm glad I figured that out, because when I first looked at Tyler's parcel description, I was like, this has a cause Euclid in it. I was very confused, but um. I. Spoke to Tyler, told him I had all the documents, but I was still working on it, and you guys were in favor of moving forward with the vacation, but he was in Canada at the time, so he's not gonna be back until like. First part of June, so I have plenty of time. To get the city to the point where we can. Truly understand what we're giving him or selling him in this nature. Yeah.
Property lines went from. They just.
Well, what I thought was easy and clean to be um vacated. Really isn't, um.
Because the right of way turns out to be not a right.
Yeah, and then um. Kevin Trapp, who works in G I S. He also said, you know. You're gonna have to figure out how you're going to. Um. Mark that out. As Outlet B, because there's really not a parcel description for it. Kind of is. And how did, how to handle the alley. They couldn't really advise me, so I sent a bunch of this stuff to Joe Lango to look over, including all the maps. Haven't gotten feedback from him yet, so I'm trying to get better direction. From our legal counsel first, before I tell Tyler what we're truly gonna be doing.
Sure.
Um, in addition to that, I know Mike had concerns in regard to the utility. I met with the Bill Trammy Electric Cooperative writing the high wire in there. Um, they went and looked at the pole, the um, the. Utility easement will remain, they're not gonna be relocating anything. But as it pertains to any utility easement, and we will have to reinforce this. And what we're doing for Tyler is that they will maintain a ten foot. Setback. Away from that power pole. You can't put anything, park anything, drop anything within ten feet of that power pole. Now, I noticed today that there was a semi parked within inches of it, so at some point, I'm gonna have to step in and say. This for sure can't happen, because the high wire that's there. Because they're not gonna relocate their utility. He can be, he can be there, but he has to be within ten feet of it. Questions?
He's been pretty understanding of the.
Um, I don't. Have a huge amount of communication with Tyler right now. I told him that I had all those documents and that we were working on it. And then I would get back to him, because this is a little on the confusing side, I didn't wanna. Um, put that in front of him, but what I do wanna do is, I do wanna meet with him, he comes back to town, because the amount of area. Of land that he's. Taking over, if you will, is my opinion outside the scope of that outlaw. And that concerns me, because that's all water. Property that he's putting his. Product on, and I think he's way outside the scope of that Outlet B area right now. I'm also a little concerned about the heavy, I mean, we already have heavy trucks bringing. Um, product to the liquor store. It's one of the reasons we asphalted and improved Pine Avenue. But his. His egress is gonna rip Pine Avenue apart, if it hasn't started already.
Or, no.
Yeah, it's alright for now. Um, I know when we remodeled and added on to the liquor store. We intended on making that north section. An impervial surface, so that can handle deliveries. It's obviously not holding up where it needs to, but. There's a lot more truck traffic on Pine Avenue than I think we improved it for. And that's gonna be a concern for the city in the future.
Um, you get a lot from the. Diesel pumps. Like levers.
That go up pine?
They can come, that way they come up, they don't have to mess with that.
Oh, the frontage approach? Yeah, the frontage approach is kind of a nasty.
They can come in and out to there, it's a little easier turn.
Yeah, but just in general, um, you know, he he really doesn't have. He doesn't have the easement and the, and the distance on either side of Pine Avenue to do, to back up some really big trucks.
Good.
So I don't know how that's gonna end up, but that may be a problem.
A lot of what ends up tearing up the roads. Is the hard turning.
Yeah.
The rental cranking on them.
Like the garbage vans?
Well, the garbage van, or look at industrial. Industrial was essentially built for Andersons. And if you look at where that road is tore up, it's where those semis are having to crank that hard ninety right there to try to back into the loading dock. And that's most likely what's gonna happen on fine too.
Yeah.
Because the way he set up there, they gotta come in and crank hard in order even have a chance at making it.
Which, which makes it more understandable to me on his vision to have an egress in and an egress out onto main, but.
True, but I think it's more to have a, a staging yard.
I agree.
Truck turnaround.
I agree. I mean, I don't wanna cuckoo his business. I think what he's done is brought, you know, he's, he's put some full-time equivalents in town, and it's been good for the. City, but. There's gonna be. We're gonna have to at some point, and Mike's gonna have to get involved in that. I mean, the whole piece of property is really ripped up. From the skid steer. And, um, I'm assuming he's got a plan, but boy, he's gonna have to bring in a lot of material to get rid of how deep everything's gotten.
Alright.
That's where I stand with Tyler's stuff.
It'll be interesting to get our attorney's opinion on that.
Yeah.
Because I don't see how we can sell that entire. Outlet B to Tyler without offering it as well to an adjoining property. Out there.
Yeah.
Either permission or a letter of disinterest. Or would we have to split it equally between them, so?
I have read through the ordinance for vaca, or the, the rules for vacation only, but there is a lot of, um. Exactly what you just said, because I sent some information about Matt Murray's request. And I got similar feedback from the attorney on that.
This is now something that you. Thank you for reentering our attention, this property we own.
Yeah, we have the deed.
Right away, so.
Yeah. So it's not as easy as I thought it was.
To vote or offer to split it. Now, my suspicion is the adjoining property owner probably does not want. Undeveloped next to it. So I guess it's not quite a swamp or it's kind of a low area. So.
I mean, it's understandable why the ball centers deeded that, because it is a really. Great property to develop anyway, because it's so low.
Yep.
Um, and that way, the city had it, and they didn't have to pay taxes on it. Um, but now we're in a situation where. Pardon me?
I think Bill also knows on council.
But now we're in a situation where Tyler already has the original Euclid and. Outlet B was already put. As whatever playground it was before he took it over, so it's already been assumed as what they're using it for. It's just not rightfully theirs.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, well. So that fence that was there probably had something to do with that.
Well. Probably. Yeah.
Way beyond where the.
So you'll keep an eye on it, Mike, for the. The fence that was the.
What would you like me to keep on?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, keep an eye on what?
For Pine Avenue, their, their little turnaround right there, the, or. Ask if we're gonna be getting some fill in there.
I can try.
Just, just let me uh, work on my side and. Maybe if I need to have a, an aligned front with Mike, together we'll be able to work it on, but. I think Tyler's willing to do just about anything, so he can keep that access. I mean, my biggest fear right now is he. There's an assumption that because he got the petition to vacate. And we're on board for doing everything, that that's why he can take over the property right now.
Nice.
And, and in theory, that's not true.
Well, not theory, in fact, that's not true.
In fact, that's not true. He just thinks it's family. Well, I shouldn't say that. I can't put words on it. But. It just.
Okay.
The way the fence was like Don does, the new property owner assumes that's part of theirs. Didn't you say?
Well, if. Fence, you think it would be on your buildings here and there's fence out there, it's.
Yeah.
Your property, you'd think.
Yeah. I haven't had any. You know, difficulty working with Tyler yet. I don't, I don't expect to, it's, it's gonna be a little bit more of a.
This is what?
Calculated project.
Of having things. Probably surveyed by some side. You know, if it's properly surveyed, then you actually know where the property line exactly is.
Yeah. And, and I may have to have.
Well, first one, walk into this.
Yeah, I may have to have surveyors come in and actually survey Outlet B. And make some stakes, so we know where that piece of property is. So.
But. Should that cost go to the?
It should go to him, yes. If he is interested in purchasing it, Don, you are right. Yep.
Right.
And that conversation we'll have to have with them. Is truly this, the piece of property you want, and we're gonna sell it to you. We need to make sure we know exactly where that ends. The problem is this, I mean, it just keeps on going downhill into the water, so I mean.
Yeah.
Does that matter either? I mean, you could question that. I'm sure he would. Like, well, no one else is gonna build next to me, so why does it matter if I keep on going? Right? I'm sure somebody's gonna ask me that.
It's quite the mess over there.
It is quite the mess over there, Witsat.
I mean, because he doesn't own it, it's not his. Can't just start going for things because they're there.
I know. But. Pretty common. I just wanna do it right. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's nothing else on virtue beyond, we will move beyond. New business. Lakeview Cemetery.
So this revision has had a long time coming. I meant to do this. Pre-COVID. Um. But now that we have a lot of things that are. Changed and updated, like. The cemetery is now a part of the city of Black Duck. A lot of things have been able to make me push myself into the right direction, but. In addition. Witsat is working on the G I S for it. I've finally. Nailed down my records and gotten those as right as rain that I can at this point, and given those back to Witsat, so. I am looking for the um endorsement of the council to move forward with the revisions that. I wanted to look back in nineteen before Mike even came, sorry. And the biggest one, um. Was the. The number of internments and cremains that could be on a gravesite. This was recommended by the previous Public Works Director. That. Um, that will be. One second.
Seven, six. Six hundred oh eight. Six.
Five.
Six.
Six. Yes. Section nine of the ordinance revision, six hundred oh eight of the um. Of the ordinance. So currently, um. What we allow. And I guess you'd have to look at the very next page. Currently, the ordinance reads no more than one non-cremained burial or interment and three. Cremains shall be permitted on anyone burial plot. And the other part says no more than four. Cremains buried shall be permitted on burial plot. And by our previous Public Works Director's recommendation and the city of Princeton's. Um. Rules and regulations, I wanna drop that to one internment, one cremain. Or. Two cremains. That's it.
Well, usually if you have husband and wife, they, they. They used to staff them.
Used to.
Used to.
Here?
Well, a lot of cemeteries, they staff them.
Yeah. We have a lot of people. Laid to rest in Lakeview Cemetery in the. You know, the bottom of the hill. In the older part with many. On top of one another. Some aren't even in vaults.
Well.
That's not good. Um, so I wanna make sure that vaults are mandatory. Going forward.
Now, it's gonna sound. I know. That. When we buried my dad out there, it was.
Yeah.
There's no vault.
Uh, and I, I think, I think a lot of funeral homes, uh, actually, they, they won't do it without anymore. But given the amount of. Overselling of grave sites that I have uh, been faced with the last year. I found it very important that this gets revised, updated, and enforced a little bit more, so I've spoken to Bob Senior and Cease. Um, I need to speak with Cease. Cease's counterpart in Vamiji as well, because the. What I'm faced with right now is a. Breakdown in communication. From the. Uh, gravesite owner, the landowner, if you will. To the city. I've been, I've come across several people that have been laid to rest. The city has been provided no, in, no um disposition report. Or their, their cremains have been laid to rest, and I've been provided no report on that. And, or. I have families that have two graves in a lot that has four graves, and they assume they own the other two on the other side and have laid somebody to rest. And I've sold the lots. My records, the way I run them. And what. Was run prior to me is. The, the, the maps have the person's last name and first name if they're laid to rest there. If it's just their last name on those records, then they own the lot. Once there, somebody's actually laid to rest there, or their cremains are there. Then their first and last name is there. Then the record, the great big spreadsheet that I have of everybody in it, all of those details are put in there, date of death, date of birth. If they're a veteran, what gravesite they're in. So the ownership of the lots and who bought them never changes what's been deeded, but we add the person's. Details of their disposition and when they're laid to rest. And. Last year, I came across a number of things that were missing. I can't guarantee that it was clerical error on my part, but I'm the only one that changes those records. So I may have come across a situation where the Excel spreadsheet got compromised. You guys might remember a couple of years ago, I came to you with. This outside source company that. You know, gave us a, a bit on taking over everything, and then we decided to just G I S, you know, the sections with Witsat. I need to probably get an external hard drive just for the cemetery records alone. And take them off of, um.
Probably.
Our server and my workstation to eliminate anything else being corrupted. But there's nothing more heartbreaking than to tell a family that thought they had. Uh, a gravesite that. The gravesite that they were sold three years prior were sold to somebody else. And I had to do it five times last year. And I don't wanna do that anymore.
Well, one is too many.
So. When I was going through the ordinance to revise, I wanted to make it very. Clear that it was, um, that no one could get laid to rest in there without the city's knowledge. And by doing this amendment, I made sure that language was in there. And by doing this amendment, I made sure that language was in there. And in their right, as a matter of fact, there was some language in there already.
What is the cost of a vault?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, I was going to mention that in the comment section that we, I don't know, I. Uh, I don't know that I have a problem with that, but I think we need to be aware if we enact this. These changes that we are increasing everybody's cost in funeral if they were not going to use a vault. I would estimate about two thousand, I paid. Seven hundred and fifty in nineteen ninety-one, which is a long time ago, and I paid about. I think at twelve fifty in twenty ten, so I would have to think it must be up about two thousand.
Okay.
Uh, there's different types, there's a box with a flat lid with no seals, and then there's the box with the dome lid and. Crimatically sealed area. And I have a vague recollection that. There was an option like a treated wood vault at some point, which was cheaper, I don't know if that's. As many decades ago, I don't know, it's still used or. Think we should be aware of that, and but these prices are gonna go up, they were not. We're relying on doing a minimal install. And it could be as much as two thousand, I I'm estimating that with equation. But it depends on what the funeral home charges for a basis, yeah, and if you really go directly to the manufacturer, you can probably do a deal, but it's always a package for the.
And was that on God's thing?
Um, arrange the excavation and install on the day of the burial, whatever you want to say.
Yeah, cause I I know it wasn't required back in.
Yeah, I did one eighty seven anyway, but eighty six.
I'm seeing, I just did a quick Google and. Maybe we're from nine to nine hundred to seven grand, something costs as much.
So there's. Really fancy.
Thirteen minutes with air conditioning.
Well. It, I mean, we don't make a ton of money out of cemetery, guys, so that that's that's the family. But we need to make sure and ensure that the cemetery can still, you know. Even, I mean, that ground is getting filled, there's a lot of holes being punched in it and there's a lot of stuff shifting. I mean, and there's a lot, the oldest section is on, like I said, is on the downside and the more soggy that property is. The more things that move.
So the only thing I can see, the downside of putting a vault in um any, I mean, you put it in, put it in square. And level, but you know, with the. The ground we have around here is all wet clay. So, you know, things are gonna move. You know? So they can tip. You know, that's what I'm thinking about putting vault in. I would see.
True, but the new section of the cemetery is on the top of the hill now. Not the bottom. I mean, we own, we have some empty spaces in the original section of the. Um, cemetery that we're not even selling right now because the ground is too soggy. Bob Senior and uh Bob Junior were like, just don't sell these around the vault, around the um um. The building out there, cause the property just can't handle it.
I know my parents died, he put up. Vaults, so.
Yeah. Once a cemetery, always a cemetery, so we don't, we don't want people falling out of the hill and ending up in the ditch. I don't know.
Do we have any idea where Sees, Mr. Sees uh. I think he mentioned some people were, some funeral homes requireables, they wanted, do you have any idea what his policy is?
They don't, but I am gonna see him tomorrow, so I will ask. I will ask.
I'd be interested to know, I'm assuming that he was gonna do a direct casting, I would ask, but.
It might, it might depend upon the cemetery, the person who's laid to rest him.
Yeah, you know, we were told, yeah, it didn't matter. I got one on a pine box and that was it.
Yeah.
It was a really nice pine box, but it was still made out.
I didn't say that they came on a plain pine box.
I mean, the biggest enforcement that we have right now is what. Is we've tried really hard um to enforce that, I can't, I mean. In the last few years, more people have gotten better at calling the city and finding out what the regulations are, I mean, everybody calls. During Memorial Weekend, you know, what's allowed, how long can the flowers be on um their loved ones' graves, that type of thing.
That was another thing.
But in terms of um markers. Those are specified by section and basically everything. Top of the hill, back. You know, almost to the top of the hill, that is supposed to be flat, and I know that there's some family members that. Turn your nose up that and did it anyway. Cause there's some people that have some pretty big markers up there and they're not supposed to. But it's um reduces the. Land. Um, your point on the Memorial Day thing, my sample from Princeton's, their memorial uh. Memorial Day timeline is a week before and a week after, and we have two weeks before and two weeks after. I didn't touch that. I left it at the two weeks.
So it shows the past fathers there, then?
It just depends on the way your calendar is, no?
That was a big concern.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is is like maybe the vaults section run is probably the most. Sketchy.
Yeah, I think we just acknowledge as a cost, although that's gonna increase people's expenses.
Right.
Want perceived that way?
Let me get some feedback from Cease when I see him this week and.
I mean, you see every every other. I don't wanna say every other cemetery, but the other ones that I. Looked at back then, they all required, it was, it it requirement isn't something new, it's just. We're not there.
Well. It was probably maybe two thousand fifteen or sixteen that we increased our grave spaces to two hundred and fifty dollars, prior to that, it was seventy-five.
Yeah.
So.
Bad kinda deal.
We're not getting that money on the vaults, right? We're not changing the prices of our cemetery site of our grave spaces, we're just trying to enforce some regulations. Breaking remaining forward for many other families.
So, I guess my question then is, benefit of the vault?
That law statute or anything, I'm kind of surprised that you can do it however.
That's a good question, too. I don't know.
They look.
But then you start to check it.
Sure. Okay.
But no, I'm all in favor of getting us on board and getting everything.
Yeah. And and lowering lowering the number of internment. To remain and cremains by themselves, is that okay?
That just makes sense.
Okay.
I don't think. Well, that just makes sense.
Okay.
I don't think you need five, six people on spot.
Okay. Mike, I know you've been gone, but we could just go through this too and see if you see any red flags for you. Yeah. That's what this is, I'll keep getting on some feedback before I um ask for an initial public hearing on this. But I I really need to get that finalized this year, been putting that off way too long.
Oh, yeah, and if we have everything GIS mapped and done. And if you put. You know, uh up to one or one body.
One instrument, one cremain or two cremains.
Or two cremains and that. Beautiful. I think.
Right.
Most times anybody doing it really, I. I think they. You know, separate the people out, you know, a little lot for each. Person, so.
When you have um an interment and a marker for the person. Um, it's, it can't be bigger than, you know, the headstone itself. But if you add a cremain, you, the family has. One or two choices that are, that I believe they can either redo the headstone, add the other person for the cremain. Or the marker for the cremain is smaller, is what Bob Seniors told me, and it can. Um, like, you know, headstone further south of the um of the grave site. So you're not, because you can't put multiple headstones on one grave site.
Right. So, like my parents, dad was not cremated, mom was. But she's got her own.
She's got her full headstone.
Her own spot.
Right.
Would they have two one right next to each other, one stone?
Mm-hmm. And that's fine, it's just when you add other cremains to that grave site.
Yeah.
And you have to marker them, then the markers are smaller.
Right.
Or the original marker is altered.
Ah, yeah, I.
Or or changed.
And a family would have. How much time to? Do you have to notify the city or to?
Well.
You go home with the cremains, it's no longer.
If we change this, if we change this, it'll be going forward, so if I sold a deed to somebody three months ago. And the rules were what they are right now. And we changed them subsequently, then they're going to have to follow the current ordinance, it's like anything else we've done. If our water was sixty-six cents and now it's seventy cents, then people are gonna pay seventy cents, it doesn't matter, you still gotta follow the rules of how we changed it. Just because no one's in the site doesn't necessarily mean they get to go backwards in time and follow the old rules.
Okay.
If that was their understanding at the time, I get it, but maybe loved ones wishes change and they're. Not cremated and cremated, or maybe they are.
Okay, so.
The funeral home should actually buy the city dog. You would think.
Well, you know, and I had it out with with them already, um. I will get a stack of um disposition reports. And none of them have the section of where the person's laid to rest. And I gotta go back and ask for that before I can even upgrade, update my files. I try to do it monthly, if not quarterly, depending upon how many I get, but even our local cemetery or our local um funeral home will tell us that. There are people that they own the grave site. They go and lay their family members cremains themselves.
Yeah, they go.
And they don't tell the funeral home or the city.
And that's.
Until a year later, when they're ready to order a marker.
That's why I would get that.
So there's a huge time gap done and there's so many. There's so many possibilities of why that time gap is there. That it really does just kind of put a hardship on the city to keep accurate records.
I guess I never thought about that.
Yeah, I'm doing the best I can with the hand that's dealt me.
See, that's that that was more my question was.
Yeah.
Family member can go out there and.
Yeah.
Open the.
Open it up and put their cremains in. Yeah, it is a nightmare.
And. It it and it's even brought up.
And it's happened many, many times.
It it's brought up in a funeral plan.
Yes.
The family members are told this.
Yeah, so, you know, Paige and I have talked about it, she will sell up, she'll social grave sites, she'll may use the records that I've been keeping. To make sure that they're empty before she does and um. In talking about revising this, she even, our standard operating procedure that we're doing, we're. Rethinking about how we're doing that, like if there is any possibility. You know, we need to make sure that that space is indeed empty um. Long time ago, when Bob Senior was Public Works Director and he was selling cemetery spaces, he'd go out there with the person and actually.
Yeah.
You know, help him pick out a space, and I think Bob Junior did it too, which is great, but. I mean, that you saw that company that wanted to to help us out, I mean, you could, you can sell them online right now, it's like, you know. As long as the records are accurate, you don't need somebody to hold your hand to take you out there and find a nice space. It's, it's, you know, land. It's not sold on real estate websites.
It's a super good reporter on the right spot.
That's the problem I'm having, yeah. There's also that north, south, east, west problem, head to toe problem. Yep. Things are getting turned around. Yep.
Really?
Yes. Yep.
Are you on direction? Got you.
Yep.
Well, if, I guess I don't, I. Well, let's do it.
But well, let me do a little bit more checking on the vault stuff.
Yeah.
I'll give you that, guys, I'll give you that feedback that I get from Cease.
Yeah, I obviously. What Mick found, man, it's like. Diamond coated. Ball.
Yep.
But, yeah, I would hate to. Anyway, we'll move on.
Okay. Um, the last item I have, uh Max is in thinking about the uh permit to allow chickens is. We have to come up with a fee um and in our conversation originally was that this was gonna be a two-year permit. I think we discussed at some point that the initial would be more than.
Renewal?
Renewals. But I don't recall if and when we settled on a price. I had so many when I was working on those are um options for you guys to consider.
Uh, you said twenty and ten.
Twenty and ten?
I thought you said.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm open to anything, you guys, cause I didn't wanna make it super expensive either, I remember that. Yeah, that's right. Okay.
I thought that's what you said.
That's great. So the initial permit would be twenty dollars and then any renewals afterward would be ten annually. I'm fine with that, I think that's easy.
Cause what's a, you know, what's a dog can buy?
Uh, ten if they're nuts bigger or bigger. Wow, that's fine. Plenty, then I can have that ready for you guys to update or approve during the final reading. Okay.
Works for me.
I have nothing else unless somebody else has something.
This is where he stands up.
It's just like, uh, I got another voicemail today from a unhappy resident over on Oscar. I know we've talked about Oscar, I've beat you to death on Oscar for years. We gotta do something, I don't know, uh, quite honestly, at this point, let me rip it up and let it be gravel until it moves forward. I can do something with the gravel at least. I can't do anything with what I have, no other than. Once the frost boils start to come out and they get soft, I can try to pound stuff into them and that's it.
You're just. It's just chunking up.
It's it's so far beyond being able to be patched. I, I mean, I can't do anything with it. All I can do, like I said, is. When it's soft, if I can time it right. And push it back down and push some rock into it and hope it dries up that way, that's what I've been doing for the last couple of years, cause it's. It's beyond anything that we can patch.
It's all soft, that might fall in the pool.
Yep, your corner sucks too, mm-hmm.
That was a whole mother.
That was a a mess up there from what I've heard, not, that was prior.
Just that, yeah.
Prior to my my being, you know, here. Sounds like a bit of a mess with.
You got here.
Misplaced, yeah, I got here in time to have, deal with the aftermath of all this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. How big a section are you talking to?
I'm talking ripping everything up.
The summit?
It's all junk, yep. Every home's a bit is junk.
You really believe the caller?
Huh?
You believe the caller?
About the pop tire? I don't know. It's hard to say, I mean, I've. I've purposely driven over that stuff before in the city pickups, in the city squad, to see how rough it is, how bad it is. I haven't popped anything. But.
You have big tires.
It's hard, it's hard to say, I mean, if somebody's running around on something that's already, the tread is gone and there's nothing left of the tire, yeah, very possible. It's I.
You got a cost? How much gravel you're gonna throw in there?
Nope, I have absolutely no idea.
Well, you've got that extra money already. Well, you've got that extra money already for gravel, so.
Well, I mean, I think the the asphalt over there is only. Two inches thick, maybe, yeah, there. No, the road was not made for what it is at all, so it's two inches, I mean. Cost wise, I'm pulling that out, that's just my time and labor for me and the guys.
Yeah.
Gravel going back in, you know, I mean, could probably figure it out pretty quickly.
Tell some chloride the heck out of it?
No.
No.
No. Certain people love it, certain people hate it, you know, it, I'll give you, it's, it's great for dust control.
But that's it.
But yeah, a- any of us that have driven on gravel much in this state know that you could say bye-bye to whatever vehicle you're driving.
I'd rather wait for a rain, get rid of the dust than drive on council floor.
Yeah, it all depends on where you live, because I'm sure the people in the townhomes and the apartment building over there would love it.
Well, let's rip it up first and get it to gravel.
And that's where I'm at, I mean, we got, we we have to do something, we have to, cuz. There's just not much I can do, I mean, you guys have seen it over there.
I know.
I've been putting gravel on top of the asphalt, trying to, you know, make it better that way, gravel doesn't really stick to asphalt. Case didn't know.
That one, that one, it's getting pretty big, that one hole there.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, we did what we could a couple of years ago with a big patch over there. And again, I think that road is very similar to Brandle on how that was built, and it was. Essentially a goat path that got driven on more and more and more until it winded out, and then an inch or two of gravel was put on it, and here you go, here's a road. It's not nice. So if you're all in agreeance, then at some point this summer, I'm just gonna start ripping up on it.
Probably wanna do the same thing in northern too, but. I don't wanna call my words on that one yet.
No, not northern, I don't, because see, Oscar at least.
It's flat and it doesn't go downhill.
And half of it is still gravel as it is, right?
True, true, true.
So that's where it's a little bit of a difference, so yeah, northern is terrible too, I got a lot of them that are bad.
Yeah, I know.
Second Street behind the school.
It's it's not, it's not a new problem here.
No, no, we all know about it.
Yep.
We're working towards doing something on all of it. Oscar over there is one, like I said, since it's already half gravel, I think we can get away with it, you know, part of the problem there too. Like we said, was never meant for what's up there now. You'd be absolutely amazed at the truck traffic that's on that road for some reason. You know, the garbage trucks, just the amount of traffic that is on that road now compared to what it was ever meant for.
Buses.
Buses, the the Dollar General traffic, like I said, delivery trucks from Dollar General coming in that way. Instead of, you know, off of the seventy one, seventy two interchange there's. There's just a lot of things like that, and that's, you know, ultimately what a lot of our roads have met their demise at is. Being built so many years ago and not for the traffic that's on them.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's semis and traffic that come in, they pull into the old restaurants at one parking lot and then they make a loop.
Yeah.
That's on, that's on Oscar too.
Yep.
Or the other way around, but still, they're still driving on that approach.
Like I say, if you guys are good with it, at some point, that's what I'm gonna do, I know. We're gonna hear about it when we rip that up and it's gravel instead of asshole, I mean, no matter what, it's damned if you do, damned if you don't over there, but.
Rip it up and they're gonna.
I can control, I can control gravel better.
Yeah.
I remember when we talked about this, the first time, wasn't there a? An assessment put on?
Well, yes, there was a section of that when industrial and railroad was done, yes, there was an assessment, that was the two thousand eleven, that sunsetted in twenty one.
And and that was part of it, when we initially started talking about it, was the assessment, people were mad, they had paid for it.
When?
You know, unfortunately, it is what it is.
How long did the road last?
Not even ten years, almost not even the duration of the assess, of the assessment. Cuz it wasn't built the way it was supposed to.
Right.
That's why we have problems with Andrew on railroad too.
So why was that, why was Oscar tarred, just for the yellow townhomes?
No, well.
No.
The businesses, the commercial businesses at that time asked for it to. Industrial was done because Anderson had asked for it and railroad was done from First Street. Main, those were all incorporated in one assessed improvement.
But and and quite honestly, what she said with which ones were done. Industrial, much of that, if you've been down it, is junk, right, railroad, if you've been down that is junk. It just didn't go in properly.
No.
They weren't dug out properly, that's the only thing I can come up with.
I'm gonna. Just go with, they take it out, and I'm not gonna say more about it, cuz I'll get myself in trouble, but.
Good enough for me. It'll come out at some point this summer. We'll, we'll find somewhere for it to go. Yeah, that stuff, sounds good, um. One other quick thing, I've got uh a pump on the Liberty Lift Station.
Of course.
Up there, so that's down, see if they can fix it, if not, it's gonna be a new pump.
Spring out, we just had Liberty fixed.
We had Liberty looked at.
Never assessed.
Yep, so.
Is there more than one up there?
There's two pumps in the lift station. I don't like that we only have one right now, because if this one goes down, then we're really having fun.
Are you still having problems with with like wipes?
Absolutely. It never goes away.
Never have it.
No, actually, the one that's picked up more so now. Um I can tell there's been some turnover in uh the apartments behind the Dollar General. That lift station has really started now, and that lift station only services. What's up Oscar right there, so it only services those apartments, Dollar General. And the seven houses that are kinda right there. And.
The rest of Carlson Mall, so it was down there, the west side of Carl.
Well, you can go up around behind Jehovah Church, so there's four, five, six.
Yep.
Six lived in houses, seven, I think. So anytime there's turnover, I can always tell when I have stuff like that, just. Like Liberty is the same way, I can tell when someone new has moved into the neighborhood, same with Forest Street. Wipes are absolutely terrible on those pumps. Disposable, flushable.
Yep, the stuff that says it can.
Matchbox cars are flushable, that means you should do it, you know. Okay, well, just a heads up on that, that that's gonna be another. Unbudgeted expense on that pump, whatever comes back, whether it's rebuilt or I gotta buy a new one. Ballpark, five to eight grand probably, would be my guess, somewhere along that, and that's just the pump.
Yeah, I know.
So, alright.
Do we need to uh? Put some on the water bills or something?
We do, no, they don't, these guys bring bags to the doors and stick them on their bed on their letter.
Tried everything, door hangers, mailers, social media, I've done it all in it.
Done it all.
It don't matter, because once they flush that toilet, as long as their toilet doesn't clog.
Nobody else's problem.
Nobody cares.
No.
But in the long run, you're a property owner in town, you're paying for it.
Right.
Because.
Taxes go up.
You know, that stuff is expensive, you know, eventually taxes go up because of it, it's just a cycle. I try and do the best we can, some people listen, some just don't care. Okay.
Alright. Anything else? Gotta wait and stop saying them.
All in favor? Aye. Can you stand the journey?